All right, we're going to call the meeting to order. Can I get a roll call?
Commissioner Brady?
Here.
Vice Chair Ford?
Here.
Commissioner Hancock?
Here.
Chair Moore?
Here.
Commissioner O'Nines?
Here.
All present.
So, our next order of business is the reorganization of the Planning Commission. So, staff?
Yes, this is, excuse me, usually handled with our first meeting of the year, but we neglected to put it on the agenda for you last time, so we're a meeting behind, but this would be the time when your body address, or, excuse me, elects a chair and a vice chair for the upcoming year. So, you're free to nominate and vote, and we can help you if you choose to, if you want to vote by secret ballot, or if you want to do something other than a straight-up nomination, we're here to assist you to do that. And so, I think the proper thing to do right now would just, for the sitting chair, to ask for nominations for chair.
Okay, so, I'll ask for nominations for chair for the Planning Commission?
I'll nominate Ben for chair.
Do I have a second?
I'll second Ben.
Okay. Then, you're okay with that?
I'd be willing to do it this year.
Okay. So, can we get a roll call vote on that, please?
Commissioner Brady?
Yes.
Commissioner Ford?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Chair Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Nines?
Yes.
That's unanimous.
And so, we need a nomination for vice chair.
I'd like to nominate Stephen.
You accept? Okay. Can we get a roll call vote, or a second, I'm sorry, on that?
I'll second Stephen.
And can we get a roll call vote?
Commissioner Brady?
Yes.
Chair Ford?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Nines?
Yes.
That's unanimous.
Okay.
Okay, and then, it has been our practice for the new officers to take their roles immediately, so we can shift chairs around and...
Okay.
How about we just shift sides?
That's, that works for me, too.
Okay, here. There we go.
Make sure you shift the gavel as well.
Yeah.
It's all yours.
Well, thank you all. All right, so, we'll move on to approval of minutes from the March 7th meeting. Are there any corrections to those minutes?
I'll move to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second. May I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Is it appropriate? The items that we had in back here, had they not been on display for some time so that any concerned citizen could have seen them? Or is this the first and only time that they were available? You know what I'm talking about?
Mm-hmm, the sample, the material samples behind.
All of the materials, including the samples, are available no later than the time the packet goes out, so, any member of the public that sees the published packet and wants to come in and view the materials, they're available in the Community Development Department during regular business hours. Also, any time a public, or any time a private project or public project is in process with us, those files are always open for public review. Anyone can come to the counter and ask to see the file.
So, I would conclude that it would have been improper to keep five or 10 people waiting while one person peruses something at their leisure?
Yes, I, I agree.
I think that was our decision at the time, yes.
Yeah.
Thank you. But, those materials were also available at the design review hearing.
Yes, they were. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I would have an input on that, that if there was another place that could make them more accessible to the public and us out there, or something, that would be a better, better arrangement. I, I had feedback after the meeting that they weren't very visible in the decision-making process by somebody who didn't speak at the meeting.
We're certainly not trying, we're certainly not trying to do our things behind the public's back. We want as much participation as possible, right? So, I agree with you, Neil.
So, if there's a, if there's an easy way of actually showing them, I mean, I would, I would support that, or at least, I would encourage that.
Okay, well, we'll talk, I'll take it up with Community Development Director Parker. Are there any, do those comments require any changes in the minutes? Are we, okay. Is there a, let's see, we had a motion?
You're going to support, you're seconding it.
Yeah, there was a motion and a second.
If there was a motion, I am seconding it.
You did.
That the item should be more visible.
Well, no, the motion on the floor is for minutes, and you did second that.
I seconded it.
Yes. Any, any more comment, any more comments about the March 7th minutes?
None.
That's fine. Okay. Do we need to do a roll call? We've been for minutes? Do we do any objections?
All abstained, I was not here at that meeting.
Right.
The clerk can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe all votes now should be really done by roll call.
If I may, the, the, I think it's the Brown Act, requires that the vote be announced. It can be a, a voice vote, as long as the vote is announced that it's unanimous, or unanimous with one abstention, but as long as it's announced, you, you can do a voice vote, so it's up to you.
Okay. All those in favor of approving the March 7th minutes, say aye.
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 And we have one abstention, so, that was unanimous with one abstention. Thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Mr. Chair, there are no changes.
Okay. So, now, I'll open the mic for oral and written communications, and members of the public are invited to step to the podium, to state your name and address for the record. Limit your comments to items not already on the agenda for discussion. Is there anybody who wishes to speak? Okay. All right, so, I'll close that, and we'll move on to the, the matter at hand, which is Milner's Anodizing Conditional Use Permit. So, we'll begin, well, I'll read the full title. It's a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Cottati approving a conditional use permit to allow a metal products finishing facility on Bloodyt Street. Do we have a staff report?
Thank you, Chairman Ford, members of the commission. My name's John Paul Harris, I'm a planner with the City of Cottati, and the, the project that is before you is, was rescheduled from our March 7th meeting. It is a use that does middle, metal finishing, so not the actual making of the parts, but the finishing of the parts to make them, well, less corrosive and more durable, and also, there's aesthetic, you can do finishing with that. It's proposed to be in the structure that we discussed at the last meeting. We discussed approving a structure at 369 Bloodyt Street. The council will hear that project tomorrow night and make their decision, will bring forward your recommendation. And if you look on page 36, which is the last page of your packet, you'll see that it occupies, that, that image shows you pretty much half the structure, and they occupy a good portion of that half of the structure, so, basically, it would be about a third of the building that we discussed last week, approximately 15,000 square feet. And, so, Milner's Anodizing is a local business. It's been in Santa Rosa for, operating for about 30 years. They're looking to make a move. They're interested in this facility here at Bloodyt Street because it allows their business to both grow, and also, they want to develop a real high-quality processing facility that is tailored to their needs, and that they're, they're going to speak about that after I give my presentation. The land use code defines a metal finishing facility as a medium-intensity manufacturing, processing use. It is allowable in this zoning district. The zoning district is commercial industrial. It does require a use permit from the Planning Commission. Currently, they have about 15 employees, and they look to expand up to 20 employees over time, and they generate probably about 30 trips a week in deliveries, both to and from the facility. The, the parking that we analyzed would require 21 of the proposed 71 spaces that are to be there. That's based on 12% of their facility being used for office space and the 88% being used for manufacturing. Manufacturing has a lesser parking demand than office space. It actually is less than we anticipated for the structure. For the structure, we allocated the parking based on 20% office space and 80% manufacturing, so, they are below the allotment of parking that we would anticipate for their use, so, in the future, if other uses want to come into the structure, we'll look at those, but they're not going to adversely impact the parking more than we would consider there. Probably, one of the, the other big plan consideration that has to do with this facility is the use of corrosive chemicals. It does require the use of corrosive chemicals, considered hazardous chemical. We looked at that, we discussed their operation with the County of Sonoma Fire and Emergency Services. They administer the COOPA program, which is the, where you would file your hazardous materials business plan, as well, they do inspections of the facility. They had only good things to say about their current operation, as well, we discussed it with the Santa Rosa Utilities Department, since they do discharge into the sanitary sewer. They also had nothing but good things to say about their operation, and, and basically, there's been no incidents with this, with this company. So, they have a good track record, and any concerns I had were alleviated by their track record, as well as some of the components that they're going to build into this particular facility. One of them is the operating floor. Beneath the operating floor will be a containment facility, so if there were an accidental spill, it's all contained in the building itself, which is a nice feature, as opposed to, if we had built the structure prior to this use, it wouldn't have had this type of containment basin built right into it, so it's nice when we can get the use in the building to come together like that. They will require permits from the Santa Rosa Utilities Department. They're requiring installation of continuous monitoring equipment, so, they're always be monitoring the pH loading, as well as looking for any chemical discharges above standards. They're also are required to file their hazardous materials business plan with the county COOPA and obtain any operational permits. And then, with respect to the conditions of approval, the, we're not recommending any conditions of approval that would change the operation. All the conditions of approval are related to them requiring, obtaining the required permits, and making sure that they get the right permits, as well as install the monitoring equipment, meet the fire and safety requirements. And that's really all I'd like to say on it. They are going to make a presentation, I'm available for questions, and, thank you.
Thank you, and thanks for all that background look, it was very thorough. Any questions of staff? Okay. I'm going to open public comments, so this is time for the applicant to come up and speak, and anybody else who wishes to give input on this, on this project.
I'm Vanessa Valentine. I am one of the owners of Milner's Anodizing. We've owned the business for eight years, out of those 30. We are really looking forward to being able to come into this facility because we can really design it the way we would like to have it designed, to meet the needs that we have, so we have growth and, and address some of the things that we think are important to address. And it's so nice to be able to have it as a single, well, not as a single, but I mean, to, to start from the ground up, to have, we're not trying to retrofit an existing building, so, we're really excited about this, you know, hopefully, approved project. I'm happy to answer any questions. My husband, as you may know, Mike, is here, and Jim Millie, who's going to give a presentation as well, so, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer now, or later during the presentations.
This would be the time, so, does anybody want to ask any questions of the applicant?
I was very impressed with your safety record in reading it through.
Thank you.
And I want to ask you a loaded question.
Uh-oh. I'm ready.
I'm, I'm looking on page 17, at some of the things that you have available, or that you store, none of them which I would like to drink.
Right.
And my question is, what is the worst possible thing that could happen with these chemicals? I'm not, I'm not pinning you to the wall, I'm not saying that this is going to happen, I'm just wondering, where are the parameters? I don't see any uranium, so we're not going to have a nuclear explosion, but...
Right.
What is the worst thing that could happen if all this stuff got dropped in by a brand-new employee?
Well, certainly, you could get burned, you know, corrosive.
You're going to have a chemical burn?
Yeah, you could have a chemical burn. We've had no incidences of that. We've got safety showers, and, you know, we do trainings on a regular basis, and things are inspected, to try to make sure that we're not missing anything, that we, we are evaluating what's going on, and, and keeping an eye on everything. But, but certainly, a burn would be the worst thing that I can think of. Jim could probably address that, he could address that.
Yeah, also wondering about environmental releases, you know, and seismic event, or something like that, that would be another.
I think Jim has got a lot of this stuff.
Great.
As part of his presentation, because he's really done a lot of, a lot of shops with this exact consideration about how to protect against environmental problems and safety as well.
If we discuss it now, then it won't be, oh, my gosh.
Yes.
I understand.
Yeah.
Any more questions?
I have a question, but I think I'll wait for the presentation.
Okay.
That sounds great.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
So, this is Mr. Jim Millie. He is a nationally renowned designer of metal finishing shops. I don't know how many he's done, but it's, yeah, more than anyone else that, that we know of. He's on the National Board of Directors of the Industry Association, and, as well as the local Southern Californian here. And so, we've asked him to come in and evaluate our plan, and look at some of the things that I have asked him to evaluate, related to your concerns, which are, which are our biggest, our biggest concern is employee safety. We work on this all the time. We have an X-MO, if you know what that is, that's the multiplier, that the more hazardous you are, the more you pay as a percentage of your workman's comp insurance. Ours is .8. We pay about the same as secretaries or office workers, because we've had zero, we've had, and I think, if you read the paper, it'll say, we had two, we had two lost workdays due to accidents in the last 10 years, and we think that's too many. We really like the employees, we go to their family functions, and we don't want to have any problems. The second thing is environmental releases. We're completely in tune with all, we, we have no objection to any of the regulations. We have read all, we've read most of the regulations. I don't know, we've sent, there's 750,000 pages, so I don't know if we've read them all, but we've read the ones that we, we think are most relevant and important. That we're totally in line, in tune with this. We don't, we have no interest in putting mercury, we don't use mercury, but if we did, we wouldn't want to put it in the river, or any of that. So, our, our concerns are with enforcement actions and things like that, and Sonoma County is, has a mixed record in this regard. In the case of our regulators, they're extremely good and reasonable. You can actually, we work with them all the time, as you may have seen from the inquiries that were made by the Planning Department, we got a, a nice response from them, and we intend to continue that. Most of the regu, the, the place where we're going to be discharging our rinse waters to is actually the same POTW that we are discharging into now, and all the monitoring stuff is in place, and we actually invented some of the monitoring equipment that they are requiring us to keep, that would, nobody had ever seen this before. We have a monitoring system that measures the output 100 times a second, where most people are doing it once an hour, or something.
Now, I interrupt for one moment, and would you please make sure we understand your credentials before you begin your presentation?
Yeah, he'll, he'll give them to you.
I mean, if you, if you went to Sonoma State and graduated...
Yeah, he has way better credentials than I do, so I'm going to turn it over to him right now.
Thank you. I'm more than 50 miles away, so I think that qualifies me as an expert, but I don't know if I can figure out how to use this computer, okay? I've got a few slides that'll hopefully help you. In fact, the, are any of you familiar with the Odeon Retreat Center up north? I know that the Sonoma County, the Sonoma County COOPA is involved in that, and I did the plating shop for them, many years ago, so... Here we go. Okay, so, I've only got a few slides. I promised to keep it short, so, and focused, so that we can answer any of your questions. So, I'm going to talk a little bit about myself. See if this works. I'm the president of a very small company up in the Bay Area, Chemical Solutions. We do two things. We do environmental consulting, we do a lot of the permits and programs, plans, reports that are required of a shop like this, and we also do design and construction of just metal finishing shops. Our focus is to design shops that produce very little waste and are, and are, and are very safe. These are some of the people that we work for, including some of the agencies, US EPA and DTSE. We actually wrote the compliance checklist that's used for the metal finishing industry, for US EPA. We wrote the Waste Minimization Checklist that's used for the SB 14 program, which some of you may know, for the metal finishing industry. So, some of the work that we've done, we've worked throughout the United States, we work for very large companies like Verium, and PerkinElmer, and Apple. We did a project for the new Mac Pro a couple of years ago, and we're known throughout. We've received several awards. I'm not going to show you too many of these pictures, because I'm trying not to show you old pictures of me, but we did receive some awards. These are environmental awards, and we've been featured on the cover of several magazines for some of the work. I can't tell you how many Dos Equis I got out of this, but I got quite a few. So, I wanted to explain a little bit about metal finishing. You saw some parts there earlier. It's the application of a protective or decorative coating. We put it on to prevent corrosion. We do it to make the part look pretty, like the red part that you see there. We do it to form parts. We commonly call it electroplating. This is where we would have a rectifier, or if you think about a battery providing electrons that makes the metal plate. A computer disc has electrolysis, or nickel plated on it, and it makes it magnetic. That's electrolysis nickel. What this shop is, this shop is anodizing. These parts that you have in front of you are anodizing, it's a very big part of metal finishing. And then, there's a lot of other things, the fences outside that are galvanizing, that's another type, that's an application of zinc. Parts that are powder coated, your cell phone is anodized, a lot of parts. I'll show you some photographs. Used everywhere, it's used in electronics industry, aerospace, they do a lot of aerospace, Milner's does a lot of aerospace defense work, automotive and medical industries, there's some very important medical parts that are finished. And without metal finishing, you would have a very shortened lifespan of goods that we use, you'd have no structural strength of parts, and a lot of things that we've accomplished, like going to the moon, would not be accomplished without metal finishing. I've got a few pictures that I'd like to show you. This is a car, and what I've done, or, in this slide, is to just put dots where there is nickel plating, not all the other plating, but just nickel plating. This is a car, it shows the different coatings. You can't, you can't see it. This is an airplane. If you notice the note that said, up front, it says, if every nickel used on the illustration was properly marked, the aircraft could not be seen. You could not fly a plane that was not properly finished. Computers, the computer I'm using is loaded with anodized, this is anodized on the surface here. And of course, in the kitchen, you can see the coffee maker, the refrigerator, the washing machine, the faucets, and the window frames, everything, that's all anodized, such as Milner's Anodizing does. These are just some examples. The Oscar awards are plated, gold plated in this case. The picture at the bottom are fishing lures that are plated. The picture in the bottom left is a stent, it's put into the arteries, if you have to, require a stent. The watches are plated. The tube at the top is a defense unit, that would not function, I will tell you, that's a missile, the housing of a missile. So, something about Milner's specifically, it's primarily anodizing, it faces an oxide coating, the parts are dipped in a dilute solution of sulfuric acid. I'll come back to that in a second, there's more. And it provides hardness and corrosion prevention on the part. These parts, for example, the fittings at the top are dyed. If you ever looked at a hot rod, and someone opens up the hood, and you see all these colored parts, those are all color anodized. The back of the iPhones, and many others are, are anodized. The new Mac Pro at the bottom, I, I did the shop for that a couple of years ago in Austin, Texas, for the Apple. They do a lot of graphic anodizing down below, those, that's actually anodized parts, and it's done with a masking method. And then, dishes, if you go to Macy's and you buy pots and pans, that's all hard anodized, what they call type three type, type three anodizing. Anodizing, this, this is what's going to go on at the facility. They're going to receive parts, they take the parts, they put them on racks, they run them through several processing tanks. Each processing solution typically has a rinse tank after it. The rinse water is the waste that they'll be treated to either neutralize it and/or remove any metals before it goes down the drain. They may or may not dye the part, they'll seal it, rinse it, they unrack the parts from the racks that they use to dip in the tanks, they package them, and they ship them back to the client. And that's typical of all metal finishing. And these are some pictures, you can see the parts are racked, that's actually a picture from Milner's current shop, some small parts, they may be very large parts. You can see in the second picture, that's actually going into an anodized tank. The tank is bubbling for agitation. The next part is rack of parts that have been black anodized, or dyed black, if they're anodized and then dyed. This, this computer right here that you see is black anodized, this is black anodized, and then they're packaged, sometimes they're bulk parts. Some environmental considerations, you know, we do plating shops that have won safety awards, we're going to make the shop the same. It's going to be totally OSHA compliant, and there's many OSHA programs that we have to work with. All the tanks you mentioned are seismic events, the tanks are going to be anchored in a very novel way, to take into consideration the potential shaking and preventing spilling. You, you heard earlier that the plating area has containment. Not only does it have containment for the potential spill from a, say, ruptured tank for a seismic event, but it also is big enough to hold the volume from the sprinklers. So, if a sprinkler went off, there would be plenty of time to hold, a volume to hold that as well. plenty of time to hold, volume to hold that as well. As I mentioned, it will be sprinkled throughout in the containment for the process storage area, also for the stored chemicals. And environmentally, we're going to apply waste minimization, in the old days, the old, old days, people would dip parts in and kind of just run them through the process and not worry about where the water went, where the waste solutions went. Now, we practice some very basic, low-cost, no-cost kind of things, like drag-out, we call it coming from a process tank to a rinse tank, drag-out, that's valuable chemical, as well as we don't want it to spill on the ground, so we put in little drain boards, and we put in extra containment, we put racks for them to hold the parts up so the parts, the chemical can drip off the parts, little things like that, and this shop will have all that. And these are some things, this is just a picture of a containment area, this was done for a shop in Palo Alto, and we, the tanks will have, in the middle picture, you'll see that there's ventilation on tanks that provide the worker exhaust, so the worker is not exposed to any fumes or vapors that might come off the tank. In the right, we have rinses where we spray, and we contain that spray, that's actually very little water, it's mostly air, and we rinse the parts with that. And I think that's it, I put up here, it's an ADCAP shop, which is really important, it's the, let's see if I can get this right, the National Aerospace and Defense Contractor Accreditation Program. And that's important, because not too many shops can get that, they have to pass a lot of environmental reviews, as well as quality reviews. So, you mentioned a little bit of concern about the exposure of the chemicals, yes, there's corrosive, there's other things too, like metals that are considered toxic, it's like the nickel I have in my pocket is toxic, you consider nickel to be a toxic, it is. What we do is, we store the concentrated chemicals in a separated area, their incompatibles are separated from each other, and we have, we have this containment, so that if there was a spill, nothing would go off-site, there's fire sprinklers to put it out, it's a very, very modern shop. If the process baths were to mix, we've done tests on this over the years, we've done many tests, but those solutions are dilute, the sulfuric acid that's used in the anodizing bath is fifteen percent, so it's relatively dilute, if you got it in your hand, it will burn you, but if it mixed with some other bath, like say a caustic, if any of your chemists you know something about heat of dilution or heat of neutralization, it's less than one degree, so you're not going to get a lot of increase in chemists. Any other questions that I could answer for you?
Thank you, are there some others? Go ahead, Neil.
Yeah, so, sounds very good, and really impressed with it, I mean, I've worked on some engineering shops and included in a foundry at one point, so just, it's great to hear about the sensing system on the wastewater, so if something was to be detected on that, is there an alarm mechanism that will propagate it to, is it an active alarm system that will propagate to somebody who can then do something about it?
Right, there'll be a horn in strobe, so that if the pH dropped below a limit, and it's set to go off before it hits the limit, so that somebody can react, and then there's lead time in the process, there's a flow of water, so it'll be many minutes that someone will be able to find it, well ahead of time.
And as I see, there's a mention for two alarm lines, digital lines, do, what happens with those, how do they?
I think that you're going to have them connected to a computer system that's going to monitor.
There's a fire.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any more questions? Okay, why don't you come on up and respond to that one?
Thank you. So, there's several different alarms, some of them are internal, some are external, the two lines you're thinking of are the fire alarms, so if there's a fire sprinkler goes off for some reason, then there's a flow in the fire water line, that flow triggers an alarm to the fire department, they come out and find out what's wrong. The internal alarms that we have have to do with measuring the pH of the rinse waters that go into the city sewer, it has to be within a certain limit, and we have designed a special machine that measures this constantly, and what we do, first of all, there's no drains, we have to understand that in the containment area, there are no drains, it isn't, and none of the tanks have any openings on the bottom of the tank, that doesn't mean they can't suddenly spring a leak, but we don't drain the tanks deliberately from the bottom. And so, what happens is that all the waste has to be pumped out of the storage areas, and so, the way I've rigged this is that if the pH is out of spec, there's no power delivered to the pump, so it can't go anywhere, it can accumulate, but if somebody's there, then there are high alarms, there would be a tank, a series of tanks are suddenly accumulating because now the pump is not working, but then there are other alarms that go off that say that these tanks are not too high, in which case, whoever's there will begin to do something about it. But then the issue arises, well, what if no one is there? So, the way we dealt with that is that all of the water coming into the facility goes through a series of solenoid valves that are collected to the light, to the light switches, so when the last guy leaves at night, he flips off all the lights, they never forget that part, and all of the valves turn off, and now there's no more water coming into the facility, so no tanks can increase in levels while we're not there, so on a three-day weekend or something, it can't, nothing can happen, whatever's there stays exactly at the same level, or it all leaks out into the containment, that could happen, but the containment is at least ten times bigger than all the tanks put together, you'd have to have an earthquake with all the tanks tipping over, plus a fire setting off all the sprinkler timers in order to use up the entire containment, we don't think that's going to happen, so.
We'll appreciate that degree of thought that's gone into, because certainly the past stuff, so if the fire sprinklers go off and filling up the containment, will they stop before it gets too high, or?
They won't stop, but somebody, the fire department then would get the message on one of the other of the two lines, we're assuming that they would be reliable. Now, well, it's an interesting question, we're assuming the fire department could get there and use the lockbox to get inside and figure out what's wrong with the place, there must be a fire for those to go off, I would assume. And so, that's the safety on that side. The issue is, after twenty minutes of, we can contain twenty minutes of full output from all the sprinklers above the processing area, we think it's, first of all, very unlikely, first of all, none of the stuff we have is flammable, all of it is an extinguisher, if you had a pile of newspapers and you took any of the contents of these tanks and threw it on there, it would put out the fire, they're all stainless steel tanks, we can't imagine how there could be a fire of anything, we have a few gallons in a fireproof cabinet of acetone or something for cleaning purposes, but we think the fire hazard is the lowest, is the least of our problems, actually.
Great.
Has our?
Go ahead.
Has our? Has our fire department been trained, or will they need special training for your facility?
Yes, and we were communicating with them, and they're very thrilled about the idea of having mock emergencies over there, so that they have some place that they can go and actually practice with their hazmat suits and so on, they're, we're actually all looking forward to doing this on a dummy basis initially, and so, they're completely ready for that. I don't know how trained they are, they obviously have whatever training is required to deal with acid spills or chemical spills and so on, but I don't think they get a chance to practice much in a particular, with a particular business, but we're set to do that, we're scheduled to do it.
My other comment is, after a career in aviation, it always makes me nervous when you say nothing can go wrong.
Oh, yeah, no, no.
Nothing bad can happen.
Yeah, nothing can go wrong, nothing can go wrong, nothing can go wrong.
But I'll give you that one.
No, plenty of things can go wrong, and we're constantly working on trying to identify what those are and coming up with proactive approaches to minimize any injury from it. We don't think that nothing will go wrong, we think it will go wrong, but the question is, can we survive that and have no spill and nobody injured?
Thanks, okay, last chance to ask questions of any of the applicants' representatives? No? Tammy?
I have a question.
Okay.
Mike, can you help me with an acronym you said, I'm trying to figure it out, deposit into a POTW, where you?
Publicly owned Treatment Works.
Thank you.
The sewer company.
Thank you. I was just trying to find it out, I think it's just going to drive me crazy.
Yeah, on our road treatment.
Thank you.
Great. Would any other members of the public like to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'll close public comment, and I didn't hear any questions that didn't get resolved during public comments, so I think we'll move straight on to Commissioner Combs.
I was very impressed with the safety of this company, and just hearing the presentation of all the safety issues being taken care of, I'm convinced that there'll be a welcome business for Katati.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I can see, I just, I'm always the one who really appreciates like how things happen, so I loved every moment of this presentation, so thank you for taking the time to put this together for us, we don't commonly have this moment, so I really did appreciate that, thank you, and I just appreciate that you're bringing in, you know, an expert into this to assist you through this process, and I think that says a lot about you as business owners, and it gets us excited about a new business joining us or as you expand, so, thank you.
I too appreciate the presentation and that you've gone to some effort to actually explain how it all works, and particularly the design of the building, I know that that really makes a difference in helping keep the safety, and also, safety is ongoing, so it's good to hear your record and that's of concern, because it's the only way of handling safety, is to have everybody paying attention to it, so thank you.
Yes, okay, I join my colleagues in thanking you for bringing the business to Katati, and these parts you brought us are frankly beautiful, so, thank you. So, would anybody like to make a motion?
Chair, I'll make a motion to approve resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Katati approving a conditional use permit to allow a metal products finishing facility to operate at 369 Blojett Street.
I'll second.
All right, can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Brady?
Yes.
Chair four?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Vice Chair O'Neil?
Yes.
Unanimous vote for approval.
All right, thank you very much, thank you all for coming in this evening.
Thank you.
We'll move on to reports by staff.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, to continue on with your urban growth boundary issue, just wanted to remind everyone that that will be going to the council tomorrow night, and the schedule at this point tomorrow night's a continuation of helping staff to develop the text, so we'll be soliciting public feedback and input, of course, from the council members with a plan to bring back draft text on May tenth for the council to react to, so happy to answer any questions or neighbors that you might have, or people that are curious, you can feel free to send them our way, and we're happy to answer that, answer those questions. Also, wanted to make everyone aware that home number four of the Habitat Project is being dedicated this Thursday, the twenty-fourth, from one to three, and all of you are invited to attend that if you can, and then the fifth and last one of those units is currently in for plan check and should be ready to issue any time, so that project has gone really well, it's a nice one. Had a reminder to, if you haven't yet, to submit your Form 700 to Tammy, she's anxious to get those back, I know, because she bugs us for them, and a reminder also of that we are likely, if we get a quorum, to schedule the joint meeting with this commission and with the city council on April twenty-sixth to hear a presentation about the climate action plan, so if we don't have a quorum for that, then we'll go to Plan B, but I will confirm that for everyone, so you should be getting an email from me on that. And I believe those are all our updates at this time, but I'm happy to answer any questions if I didn't address something.
Are any of us needed there, or will our notes be sufficient?
For the UGB item, the notes are sufficient, we did a recap for them of the major discussion points, so you don't need to attend, of course, you're welcome to, but I don't think you would be called upon to comment on it at this point.
Any further questions for staff?
Yes, I have a question, so if we e-file, this might be for Tammy, I don't know, maybe you can, if we e-file our Form 700, do you receive verification of that?
I sure do, if you e-file through the NetFile system, the link to which is on our website under Quick Links, then once you've hit e-file, you are finished, and you don't have to do anything more, and I can track those.
Great, thank you.
I think I did mine, too.
Yeah.
I copied her anyway.
It's been a long time.
Was it?
I copied Tammy anyway, just so that I had a record of it.
Thanks.
Any more questions for staff? Okay, any reports from commissioners? All right.
I should, sorry, I want to take a moment just to thank Lisa for being our chair, I really appreciated her time as chair.
Absolutely.
Thank you. And then congratulations to both of you as well, so, thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Yes. Okay, if there's nothing more, we are adjourned.
Thank you.